Every day is Valentine's Day at the Dial-A-Date Network. Get on our Singles Computer Network free by leaving your name, phone number, and address, date of birth, time of birth, and location of birth. Call us back to see if you have a possible match in a day or two, after 7:00 PM weekdays, or any time on the weekends. Please use our confidential call mailbox. Keep trying. Your calls are very important to us, to the Dial-A-Date Network. Thank you.
When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
Mayor Bullard?
Here.
Alderman Lake?
Here.
Alderman Tera-Midgen?
Here.
Alderman West?
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Here.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
I'll present the motion to... Motion to executive session.
I'll second it. I'm over it.
I'll second it.
Sorry.
For the purpose of initiating the release contract. Present the motion to roll call. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Tera-Midgen?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do you want to give me a... Go on here, Sam.
Hi, Bert.
Joe?
Hi, Bert.
Today's...
It's only...
It's late. Yeah.
Great, you got a snack. And you got a whole... That's six.
I'll take it pretty crap... Pretty high spirits, but I need a resolution to come out of executive session.
I'm over it.
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Here we are. Could I ask everybody to rise and salute the flag?
We salute the flag of the United States of America. The good republic of which is God's nation under God, indivisible, with the great... ...of the great God of our world. Any changes, additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to delete item number 25.
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 25 is deleted.
One other item, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cavallaro? For addition, just for the record, there was a... At the last council meeting, there was an item tabled relative to the official newspaper. And just for the record, to untable it at this... At this meeting with the proposal to drop it. The number is there? Not on there now, but it was at the last meeting to be brought back on the table at this meeting. Do you want to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Further proposal to drop it, yes.
We'll move that to item number one.
Sure.
Good.
Rather two... Three.
Before we get started, I'll take one minute to read a letter. Dear Mayor, Topath Housing Corporation would like to thank the city of Fulton and the Fulton Fire Department under the command of Chief Jensen for the quick response to the emergency that developed Sunday, January 21st, 1995, when the downtown electric grid was blacked out for 19 hours. Fire Department coordinated with the... Coordinated with the county fire control to have Granby, Cody Fire Department provide a generator truck and personnel on the scene until Fulton cleared some emergencies, then took over for the night. Firemen walked up 11 stories several times an hour to ensure the safety and welfare of the tenants and also to ensure immediate response time during an emergency. The officer in charge at the scene took time to make arrangements for coffee and donuts to be delivered at daybreak so tenants could enjoy something warm. Please extend our wholehearted thanks to all city personnel of the city that have contributed to and have enriched the lives, both past and present, of those who have enjoyed living in Topath Towers. Very truly yours, Cecil Peters, managing editor... Managing agent, pardon me, Topath Towers. Letter dated February 15th. Council has five public hearings on the agenda, and I was asked that the rules that have been adopted by this council be amended to ask that any input be limited to five minutes.
Result, city clerk be authorized directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on April 4th, 7:00 PM in the council chambers, relative to a proposed local law to amend Section C-54 of the city charter entitled "Official Newspaper." I'll just move to drop that.
I'll second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolved, the minutes of the common council meeting held on February 7th, February 15th, and February 21st, 1995 are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolved, the minutes of the common council meeting held on February 7th, February 15th, and February 21st, 1995 are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolved, the minutes of the common council meeting held on February 7th, February 15th, and February 21st, 1995 are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any representative here of the Fulton Wrestling Team?
I'd just like to comment, and once again, congratulations to the wrestlers. Also, congratulations to the high school basketball team, which had their best record in 20 years. Also, to the volleyball team. And without going into all the different teams that represent the city, we certainly want to congratulate and thank all the athletes for their efforts this year.
Thank you. Want to read the next resolution, please? There's a meeting of the council held on February 7th. The city clerk was authorized directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of March 7th, 7:00 PM in the council chambers, municipal building Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law to abolish Chapter 23 of the Fulton City Code entitled "Recreation Commission." Mayor Bullard will now declare the hearing open.
Public hearing is open, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor, I just... I want to jump in right here at the front. At a commission meeting held last night, it was asked that I make these remarks to the council and public at large, and I know there are people that may want to comment, so I'll be brief. The reasons they were discussed that led up to this public hearing to abolish the Recreation Commission were that the duties of the commission are a gray area and it was not chartered correctly, and another reason was for poor attendance. I just want to demonstrate that this is Chapter 23 of our city charter that we are talking about. It's very limited in content, one minor paragraph on the back. It may appear vague in content. However, that local law was developed pursuant to Article 13 of the General Municipal Law. It is the general municipal law that brings clarity to the powers and duties of the commission. It is not unlike any other local law in any community in this state, or perhaps anywhere in this country. And to support that, I took liberty in contacting the code publishing department to ask them to send me some local laws regarding recreation commissions. And I've just picked out a few. The first I'll show you is the town of Hazlet. This is their local law for recreation commissions. Minor paragraph on the back, very brief, very similar to Fulton's. Another one I have is the bureau... Or borough of Wallington. This is their local law, recreation commission. Same thing, very minor in content. Both the town of Hazlet and the borough of Wallington are municipalities in New Jersey, yet their local law is identical in contrast to ours. I would say that if the council truly is having difficulty discerning the powers and duties of the recreation commission, then we should probably do the proper thing, and we should provide our local law with something more descriptive in nature. I said it at the last meeting, this commission, our recreation commission, needs direction, so we should look to give them that direction and perhaps not abolish them. I'd like to show you now the... A local law from the town of Seneca Falls, New York. This is their local law. It is three pages, very descriptive in nature. It lists 11 duties of what a recreation commissioner should do, the terms of membership, the officers, and the duties of those officers. It addresses meetings. It has a minimum amount to be held, what constitutes a quorum, the attendance at meetings, and provisions for automatic dismissal. And it has other details in there. I think that we should take the wisdom offered by the Seneca Falls local law and make it into ours. I can recall when we reworked our garbage and recycling program, we took the wisdom of another community and applied it here in Fulton. So I would ask my colleagues, after we close this hearing, we should decide to retain a 65-year relationship and don't taint the memory of hard-working, caring citizens who served on this commission for 64 years or better. That is all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else to speak on this issue?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. The first thing I got, and I've got to try to do it in five minutes, so I've got to hurry. At the last meeting, Mr. Weston told us about our lack of attendance, so what I did, I got a list of all... For 1994, of all the commissions in the city of Fulton. I would like to give this to Bob, send it down. What you're going to see in this report is the recreation commission is not the only commission that misses... Some people don't come to the attendance, and almost every commission and board is guilty of the same situation. So, Mr. Weston, at the last meeting, you were coming down hard on us, and I'll look through that whole thing, and you can take it home or do whatever you want with it. I'd like to say if... What you should do with all these commissions are have a blanket policy for every commission. I know every commission's got different duties, what they have to do, but you should have an attendance and a few other odds and ends, so everybody is covered under the same blanket policy. Now, we're going to go to Mr. Allen, who made the resolution last... Last month. I read in the Valley News yesterday that Mr. Allen said, "I don't feel that a commission works as it should. What worked under the old charter doesn't work well today. What it takes now is a group of people with imagination, creative ideals, who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get dirty if they have to." So I'm going to respond to that. January 1994, after calling 17 communities around us, we voted on user fees. We brought it in in front of the council, and you people voted for it. To go and... It took effect April 1st, 1994. Number two, voted in February 1994 to take over the softball league. Approximately 900 men and women played in the league in 1994. This made $13,000 in user fees. It was such a great league that Mr. Weston brought up a resolution to thank everybody for the great job that Barry Ostrander, the recreation commission, everybody involved in the new league did, and it was passed 6-0. Number three, other programs were part of the user fees in 1994. Men's basketball, men's soccer, men's hockey, youth hockey, figure skating, lacrosse, knee-high basketball, indoor tennis, the swimming pool, and volleyball. Total user fees in 1994 was approximately $34,000. These programs just don't happen. It's cooperation between the recreation director, the commission, and the city. At last night's monthly meeting, two other programs that Mr. Ostrander is going to have this summer in cooperation with the YMCA and their director, Lyle Wolkas, we're going to have a beach volleyball league down on the beach at Reg Park. Barry Ostrander, with the help of the commission also, is going to run a knee-high JV basketball league this year with knee-high director Jerry Shrimp taking over at the War Memorial. And this is be for individuals 13 and 16 years old. Also, Jerry's trying to have a basketball camp this summer. On creative ideas and imagination, last November, the commission and the Sterling Boxing Club brought a boxing bout to the War Memorial. We had close to 1,000 people that Saturday night, and with such a success that we are planning, if we still have a commission, to have another one in May. Friday night before the event, Sammy Gleeds, Jerry Shrimp, Barry Ostrander, myself, and a dozen Hispanic adults and young gentlemen worked at 12:00 midnight to set up the ring, which came in by the truck from Rome, New York. To put a ring in is heavy work. The next day, at 10:00 o'clock, we put up 350 folding chairs, cleaned the floor in bleachers, and got ready for that same night. You aldermen were there, and we had nothing but good remarks about the evening. A few people went home, the same people, plus anybody I could grab to put up... Put up... That I could get. We put up the folding chairs, took the ring apart, loaded it on the truck so it got back in Rome without paying another day's rent, cleaned the floor, left Saturday night at midnight. No, Mr. Allen, we didn't roll up our sleeves. It was too damn hot and sweaty to roll up our sleeves. We wore in t-shirts. We did get our... We did get our hands dirty, and to say anything else is an insult to my intelligence. Mr. Allen, if you want creative ideas, we want an outdoor basketball court for the youth of this community. We haven't got one outdoor basketball court. I mean, a full-length basketball court for kids 16, 17. I got one more minute here.
Sure.
Okay? Thank you. We haven't got one court for these kids that are 16, 17, that are taking care of the little kids, the adults, nothing in between. We want a... We want a court. That's a... That's an idea. The kids right now are going to a swig where the beer flows freely. We all know that. Why don't we keep them here, keep them involved? Mr. Allen, I've got many creative ideas, and I'll tell you now, I'll meet with you anytime at your convenience to share my ideas.
I'd like that.
But I... But I warn you, you must bring your checkbook, because that's what they'll count. Money is the thing. Thank you.
Yeah, but you've got to think too about how to raise the money. And can I say one more thing?
Yes.
If you're going to quote me, quote it off.
Well, I'm going to call out the paper. You want to read it, please? It's right in the paper.
I said I have no problem with anyone on the commission.
I don't feel the commission works hard. I have nothing against the people serving in the commission. Okay. What it takes now is a group of people, which, as far as us, with imagination, creative ideas, who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get dirty. I've been dirty before, and I'll be dirty again.
Okay.
I never went to college. I went to the School of Hard Knocks. Black and blue is our colors. So to say this, that we didn't dirty our hands, we do dirty our hands. If you want to meet with me sometime during the week, we can meet. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Sam Galizia, I'm a 15-year member of the recreation commission, and through the years I've worked with many council people, men and women, and we always had a good relationship, and we always did our best as a commission. In our hearts, we're always in the right place. We had many good men on that commission and women, and I took the time just to look up some of the people who were on that commission in the past, and we've had some very fine gentlemen and ladies on that commission who worked hard and had backgrounds in recreation, fitness, educators. There was a real cross-section of good citizens in this community that were willing to work and give their time. Just to give you a few names, Johnny Nyoti, Don Distin, Bill Shrimp, Bob Lamandra, Dom Munger, Donald Knight, Mike Hogan, Ed Kusbaric, Mary Carey, Tommy Carroll, Jimmy Rice, just to name a few. All outstanding people in this community, all working hard to do what's best for recreation in this community. Again, I've... We've had our differences in the past with other commissions or with other councils because of... It was always the money. We had a lot of ideas, brilliant ideas. As a matter of fact, a lot of the capital projects we got through, and some we didn't get through because of lack of funds. And this is the bottom line, is the money line. Now, I really feel hurt after serving here 15 years to make me feel like I'm not doing my job, that it's our fault because the buildings are in... Coming apart, the playgrounds are in bad shape, the equipment's in bad shape. We knew these things. As a matter of fact, the community took the time to have a study done by the Tony Cotts Associates. It was done in 1993, and it was completed in '94 and put into this program. And I've read through this program completely, and I went through it again the other night trying to find where it says in here that the recreation commission should be abolished. There's not one iota in here that says it should be abolished. If anything, we should be working together. That's why the commission is here to help you people, not to hinder you. I feel like you're making me feel like we're hindering your progress, and we're not here for that purpose. We're here to help. Whatever we do was for the best interests of the interest of the citizens of this city and for what's best for this community. And that's my feelings, and that's the feelings of every member that's ever been on this commission and the present membership. And there's just one paragraph I want to read out of this program. And besides, this costs taxpayers a lot of money to put this together, and by ignoring this, we're throwing money out the window. "The recreation commission has an opportunity to extend a leadership position reflecting the community's needs..." Let me get my specs here. Things are a little fuzzy.
[inaudible]
...response to that. January nineteen ninety-four. After calling seventeen communities around us, we voted on user fees. We brought it in in front of the council and you people voted for it. To go and it took effect April first nineteen ninety-four. Number two, voted in February nineteen ninety-four to take over the softball league. Approximately nine hundred men and women played in the league in nineteen ninety-four. This made thirteen thousand dollars in user fees. It was such a great league that Mr. Weston brought up a resolution to thank everybody for the great job that Barry Ostrander, the Recreation Commission, everybody involved in a new league did, and it was passed six oh. Another, number three. Other programs were part of the user fees in nineteen ninety-four. Men's basketball, men's soccer, men's hockey, youth hockey, figure skating, lacrosse, knee-high basketball, indoor tennis, the swimming pool and volleyball. Total user fees in nineteen ninety-four was approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. These programs just don't happen. It's cooperation between the Recreation Director, the Commission and the city. At last night's monthly meeting, two other programs that Mr. Ostrander is going to have this summer in cooperation with the YMCA and their director, Lyle Wolkas, we're going to have a beach volleyball league down on the beach at Rec Park. And Barry Ostrander, with the help of the Commission also, is going to run a knee-high JV basketball league this year with knee-high director Jerry Shrimp taking over at the War Memorial. And this is be for individuals thirteen to sixteen years old. Also, Jerry is trying to have a basketball camp this summer. On creative ideas and imagination, last November, the Commission and the Sterling Boxing Club brought a boxing bout to the War Memorial. We had close to a thousand people that Saturday night, and with such a success that we are planning, if we still have a Commission, to have another one in May. Friday night before the event, Sammy Gleeds, Jerry Shrimp, Barry Ostrander, myself, and a dozen Hispanic adults and young gentlemen worked at twelve midnight to set up the ring which came in by the truck from Rome, New York. To put a ring in is heavy work. The next day, at ten o'clock, we put up three hundred and fifty folding chairs, cleaned the floor in bleachers, and got ready for that same night. You aldermen were there, and we had nothing but good remarks about the evening. If you people went home, the same people, plus anybody I could grab to put up, that I could get, we put up the folding chairs, took the ring apart, loaded it on the truck so it got back in Rome without paying another day's rent, cleaned the floor, left Saturday night at midnight. No, Mr. Allen, we didn't roll up our sleeves. It was too damn hot and sweaty to roll up our sleeves. We wore in t-shirts. We did get our, we did get our hands dirty, and to say anything else is an insult to my intelligence. Mr. Allen, if you want creative ideas, we want an outdoor basketball court for the youth of this community. We haven't got one outdoor basketball court. I mean, a full-length basketball court for kids sixteen, seventeen. I got one more minute here. Okay, thank you. We haven't got one court for these kids that are sixteen, seventeen, or taking care of the little kids, the adults, nothing in between. We want a, we want a court. That's, that's an idea. The kids right now are going to a swig where the beer flows freely. We all know that. Why don't we keep them here, keep them involved? Mr. Allen, I've got many creative ideas. And I'll, I'll tell you now, I'll meet with you anytime at your convenience to share my ideas.
I'd like that.
But I, but I warn you, you must bring your checkbook, because that's what they'll count. Money, money is the thing. Thank you.
Yeah, but you gotta think too about how to raise the money. And can I say one more thing?
Yes.
If you're gonna quote me, quote it off.
Well, I'm gonna call out the paper. You want me to read it, please? It's right in the paper.
I said I have no problem with anyone on the Commission.
I don't feel the Commission works hard. I, I, I have nothing against the people serving in the Commission. Okay. What it takes now is a group of people, which, as far as us, with imagination, creative ideas, who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get dirty. I've been dirty before and I'll be dirty again. I never went to college. I went to the school of hard knocks. Black and blue is our, our colors. So to say this, that we didn't dirty our hands, we do dirty our hands. If you want to meet with me sometime during the week, we can meet. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. Sam Galizia, I'm a fifteen-year member of the Recreation Commission. And through the years, I've worked with many council people, men and women. And we always had a good relationship, and we always did our best as a Commission. And our hearts were always in the right place. We had many good men on that Commission and women. And I took the time just to look up some of the people who were on that Commission in the past. And we've had some very fine gentlemen and ladies on that Commission who worked hard and had backgrounds in recreation, fitness, educators. There was a real cross-section of good citizens in this community that were willing to work and give of their time. Just to give you a few names, Johnny Nyoti, Don Distin, Bill Shrimp, Bob Lamandra, Dom Munger, Donald Knight, Mike Hogan, Ed Kusbaric, Mary Carey, Tommy Carroll, Jimmy Rice, just to name a few. All outstanding people in this community, all working hard to do what's best for recreation in this community. Again, I, we've had our differences in the past with other Commissions or with other councils because of, it was always the money. We had a lot of ideas, brilliant ideas. As a matter of fact, a lot of the capital projects we got through, and some we didn't get through because of lack of funds. And this is the bottom line, is the money line. Now, I really feel hurt after serving here fifteen years to make me feel like I'm not doing my job, that it's our fault because the buildings are in, coming apart, the playgrounds are in bad shape, the equipment's in bad shape. We knew these things. As a matter of fact, the community took the time to have a study done by the Tony Cotts Associates. It was done in nineteen ninety-three, and it was completed in ninety-four and put into this program. And I've read through this program completely. And I went through it again the other night, trying to find where it says in here that the Recreation Commission should be abolished. There's not one iota in here that says it should be abolished. If anything, we should be working together. That's why the Commission is here to help you people, not to hinder you. I feel like you're making me feel like we're hindering your progress. And we're not here for that purpose. We're here to help. Whatever we do was for the best interests of, the interest of the citizens of this city and for what's best for this community. And that's my feelings, and that's the feelings of every member that's ever been on this Commission and the present membership. And there's just one paragraph I want to read out of this program. And besides, this costs taxpayers a lot of money to put this together. And by ignoring this, we're throwing money out the window. The Recreation Commission has an opportunity to extend a leadership position reflecting the community's needs. Let me get my specs here. Things are a little fuzzy. To operate, equip, maintain playground and recreation centers in the city of Fulton, the Commission must be a strong and articulate advocate for the appropriate delivery of recreational opportunities and ensure influence the defined role of Recreation Department. The Recreation Department should be given the necessary charge for its duties, which should be appropriate to the purpose with accountability for its finances and its delivery of services. And with that, I'd like to say, gentlemen and Kathy, this is not time for confrontation. This is time for reparation, for forgive and forget, and let's start working together and forget about all these crazy idiosyncrasies. Let's take that resolution tonight and tear it up. And let's get together and start working together for what's best for the city of Fulton and its people. That's the way I feel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Harold Single. I served on that Recreation Commission also for several years before sitting where you are for eight years. At the time, I served probably seven different Commissions as a standing committee, as a member of the council. If it was not for those Commissions in place, I do not know where the council would be as far as information is concerned. I know as a member of the Commission, as a standing member of the Committee, when I was alderman, it was necessary to have these reports brought back to us to let us know where we stand in the realms of recreation. We had Glenn Spadiani for a number of years, doing the best job he could for the money allowed at the time that was there. Yet Barry Ostrander, who has taken his place, has had his hands tied because of lack of funds. I was, you know, I can say I was one of the members that had to, because of lack of finances, shut down North Bay, not because I wanted to. I'm a camper. My wife and I spent many a year there from the day it first opened up. The West Side Pool, which had fallen apart, we shut that down. Why? Lack of money. But without the input of the Recreation Commission, there is no way that any alderman could stand on any of these Committees and serve every night in a week. In fact, you don't have the time. If you're married and you have a family, you need the Commissions. You need the Recreation Commission. And I say one thing, and I served with Sam. That was a man that was dedicated, year in and year out. I don't remember, and I've missed a few, the ones I did attend, that Sam ever missed one. The same thing that Bruce Thorpe, who spent many a night in time down there arguing with the, the Recreation Services and also the Council. He kind of argued with me a few times also. But I feel it's a need, it's a necessity. And I myself would like to see you think back and think twice before you disband any Commission. Thank you.
Joe Langley, thirty more on Drive. Before this council votes on this, I would at least like to see this issue tabled until you can have meetings with these people. I've heard a lot of positive things about this Commission. It's my understanding that the cost that these commissioners are paid is minute compared to the services that they provide. So unless we can have some hardcore reasons, valid reasons, why we're looking to eliminate these people, I would certainly like to see you people reconsider this. Thank you.
Clear the meeting.
Excuse me. I'm gonna ask for anyone from the council. Obviously, I'd like to refer to the comments that have been made so far about my concerns. I think procedurally, the Charter does not specify the responsibilities of the Commission. I think attendance has been poor, which I just looked down through the other Commissions, and I think in most cases, those other Commissions had quorums. And a lot, a lot of times, the Recreation Commission didn't have quorums. They had a couple of months during the summer where they couldn't meet because of a lack of interest or participation. But I, you know, in a small city, of course, you know everybody. And I've certainly known Sam Galizia, Tony O'Mayo, Bruce Thorpe, and Perry Single, and all the people that Sam mentioned that had worked on the Commission before. There's no question that we've had a lot of good people working on that Commission. And I think that our thoughts, or my thoughts, were that the Commission was not working. Whatever was expected wasn't being done. However, having heard from three or four people tonight who have been actively involved in the Commission, I for one would like to recommend at this time that we do, as you know, this is a public hearing, and once the hearing is closed, but at that point, I would like to recommend that we do table this for further discussion.
I'd just like to make a few comments, Mayor. This is, as I, from my perspective, this is not an issue of personalities or disrespect for any Commissioner, present or past. What I see is that the city is in a crucial transition period, which requires flexibility and quick response. Sometimes too many fingers in the clock in the pot slows that response time. We need innovative and creative ideas, and that is to do more with less. We keep coming back to money. It's a money problem for recreation. It's a money problem for every department in this city. The ultimate responsibility lies with the council. My suggestion is to have the council form a task force to work with the Recreation Superintendent and others who might be willing to work toward achieving short-range and long-range plans. I thank those on the Commission for what they have done and what they may choose to continue to do in the future if they'd like to work under those circumstances. Thank you.
Well, as a prelude to this public hearing at the last meeting, there were a lot of allegations tossed around. And I guess that was supposed to serve as evidence that the Recreation Commission was not doing its job in an efficient manner. And I believe that was not a fair assessment of this Commission. I support their efforts fully. I've attended every meeting, including the one last night, in which every Commissioner attended, even at this late hour of the faith before them. And I'd just like to take a few minutes to illustrate one example of what good this group has attempted to do for the city. There are eleven accounts that make up the Recreation Department. And the A seventy-two sixty-six account, the Community Center account, is one of them. And I'd like to examine with you for a minute this account and focus on the ice rink operation, since that has been under considerable scrutiny and pointed at the Recreation Commission as not doing their job. I'd like to pass out some handouts to the council, and there are handouts on the table there if anybody would like to get one. This, this illustration is only going to take a few minutes. Incidentally, copies of these handouts will be available in the City Clerk's office tomorrow morning for anybody who wishes to understand the operation of the Community Center. For those who don't have handouts, I just quickly put together, my artistry is not that good. I quickly put together these posters to illustrate what I'm talking about here. In October nineteen ninety-three, the Recreation Department proposed its ninety-four budget request for this account. The one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollar request you see here also reflects seventy-three thousand dollars in capital improvements. Now, when the Budget Committee of the Council reviewed this request, they allocated one hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars for the fiscal year operation. They decided that the capital improvements were not essential at that time. The city didn't have the cash. However, you'll note, the Recreation Commission actually spent ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents of this allocated money for the Community Center operation. And by not spending the total allocation, they have saved the taxpayers in round numbers ninety-nine hundred dollars. And I have broken out all the figures for you in the handout sheets. This ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollar expenditure represents the fiscal year of nineteen ninety-four, from January one to December thirty-first. So let's see what this money purchased. The bulk of the year, two hundred and twenty days, the Community Center houses community events such as Alx May Day, high school graduation, YMCA auctions, drum corps rehearsals, Riverfest, indoor lacrosse, Cracker Barrel Fair, roller skating, band concerts, and Italian-American fest. The twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents represents the total expenditure for this two hundred and twenty-day period of time. This segment, the seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents, is the direct expenditures to the one hundred and forty-five-day operation of the ice rink. The total breakdown of expenses is available to you in the handout. When you add the expense of the two hundred and twenty days in the one hundred and forty-five-day ice rink operation, you arrive at the total expenditure in this account, ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Now, let's focus in on the one hundred and forty-five-day ice rink operation, which is page three of your handout. The expenditures, we know, total seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars rounded. Revenues generated by this operation totaled sixty thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Those figures, the revenue figures, are on page six. It's all broken out for you. So you see, the total deficit of the ice rink operation is thirteen thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and ninety-six cents. This is a deficit figure. But it is nowhere near the sixty thousand deficit the media has consistently reported. Now, along comes a management agreement. What's it do for the city taxpayer? For the one hundred and forty-five-day operation of the ice rink, the agreement relieves the taxpayer of the seventy-three thousand rounded expenditure. It relieves us of the sixty thousand rounded revenue that we took in. And, and this is important, it relieves the city of the ability to generate nearly double that revenue. It also causes the taxpayer to pay ten thousand dollars in subsidy, for which we get back ten cents from the contractor.
Excuse me, is this germane to the Recreation Commission?
Yes, it is. And I'll be moving on to that very shortly. And the taxpayer is also burdened by retaining the employee ice rink salaries of twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And there's still the May to August expenditures of nineteen thousand plus. So in summation, the agreement actually leaves the taxpayer paying fifty thousand, two hundred and forty, or four dollars and seventy-one cents in subsidy to the Community Center account. So was there a better solution? On page four of the handout, you will note that on November fourteenth, sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-six, the Recreation Department released proposals to the council, always with a December fifteenth target date in mind. And why December fifteenth? Because the Recreation Commission, who wrote the local law creating user fees and passed it on to this council for its approval, they understood December fifteenth as the annual review and adjustment date regarding user fees. The Recreation Commission developed a fifty-four thousand dollar proposal. That November seventeen proposal can be found on pages seven and eight of the handout. It called for an increase in ice rates, new revenue generators, restructuring of staffing, and funding alternatives for capital improvements. Unfortunately, the proposal was precluded from implementation due to the passage of the agreement. So the net result of the Recreation Commission proposal is this. Instead of the fifty thousand-plus taxpayer subsidy that we now realize under the agreement, the Recreation Commission was proposing to pay the entire expenditures of the ice rink operation. They would net over forty thousand dollars towards capital improvements, and they would operate the entire one hundred and forty-five-day operation of the ice rink without the benefit of a single penny from the taxpayer. It would have been a classic user fee operation. And just so as you understand the sequencing, there is a timeline indicates the Recreation Department and Commission that they had submitted their work well in advance of November thirty. It should be noted that Commissioner Thorpe's request to not vote on that agreement on November thirty was not heard. And subsequent to that, two joint meetings with the Rec Commission to discuss these details were denied. I have worked directly with this Commission for the past fifteen months. The group are as concerned and caring about recreation and have as much imagination about city recreation as any group that can be assembled in this city. Their only burden was that city administrations, including the one, this one, would not provide the financing to make the improvements and develop the program. Program in this administration says they are guilty of not doing. I simply ask, consider the value of this Commission. Work with them. Let them remain. And I ask my fellow councilmen to think about that matter. Thank you.
Just a brief comment on Jim's report. He went into detail about the Community Center and the ice skating situation. But once again, the figures we had to work with when we went over the budget were much different than the ones that were just detailed. And that's what we had to go by, the Recreation Superintendent. And, and we had different aldermen that went to the City Chamberlain to tell us exactly, are we, are we expending money or are we taking in money? So our figures are always different.
Well, not to debate it, but I wouldn't refute it, because on November seventeenth, and it's in your handout, that information was provided to you. And that was prior to the Recreation Department budget hearing.
Declare the hearing closed. It's the council's plea.
I'm going to second Bob's motion.
I'll repeat that motion.
We would have to repeat it.
I'd like to make a motion that, that the council consider tabling this at this time and look at some, get some input from the Recreation Commission and look at this. Continue to look at this.
Till the April fourth meeting.
April fourth, maybe.
Till the April fourth meeting. You're second to that, Mr. Allen?
I second it. I would just say, I don't really believe it's fair to these commissioners. They've gone through one month of embarrassment. They've gone through one month of embarrassment, and I've talked to these individually in public, not at commission meetings, but in public, in places of work. They're embarrassed by this, and I think we need to resolve this. If it be the wisdom to abolish this Commission, do so tonight. If not, restore these people. I've given you a local law from the town of Seneca Falls, details what you are asking that a local law should detail. Maybe we should act on that.
I didn't get a chance to speak. I'm sorry I had to leave. I want to make this clear, that we all knew why we brought this here. And I'm, I'm, I am willing to listen to the public, and I want to make some comments. Mr. O'Mayo, I know you are willing to pull up your sleeves. But I know that you had little help. You and Mr. Galizia worked very, very hard. And we have always said that the people on this Commission were good. But the dynamics of this group has failed, in my opinion. We came before each tonight, and obviously, I agree with Mr. Single that this common council does need the help of people. But I do, I do want to go to the future to look for a task force and get different ideas. We came here tonight with a specific idea. I do think it's only fair that we do bring it to a serious vote tonight. I don't think there's any other issues that I am aware of that will change my mind on this matter. The, the programs that are in effect are still in effect. The strong programs this community gives to these kids are private organizations. They are the knee-high basketball. They are the Pop Warner football. These are private organizations, not city-run organizations. And the user fees were brought forth by an alderman. It was Mr. Teramigi. And the softball association program was brought forth, not by the Recreation Commission, but by an alderman, and I commend him for that. It is, it is usually what I find at the meetings, that they have been unproductive. We always are asking for money, and we are always blaming councils for having to cut budgets, which is part of our job and a difficult part of our job. budgets, which is part of our job and a difficult part of our job. I do want to look at other things in the future. I think that's what we are here to discuss tonight, and I would like to be fair to them and bring this to a vote tonight. If any of the aldermen have changed their mind, or if any of the aldermen feel the information has changed drastically, then I, there's certainly a right to their vote, but I do believe that we came here tonight because we felt that the Recreation Commission is a dynamic of the group, not individual personalities, or what had failed us, and it is not one person. That is what we came for, and it was a serious matter, and I think it should be taken seriously. And I would call for a vote tonight.
You have a motion.
You have a little bit to talk to the committee. I watch you for this very important word. If you're out of order right there, you don't know what you're talking about.
Mr. Warren, please sit down.
I'll sit down. Don't worry about it.
Mayor, excuse me, just one minute. Kathy, you've heard the one number one. You've sat there fifteen months. You're not a number one. It's not over a year to look at this commission. Now, if you feel that the structure and the duties of the commission are not to your liking or to meeting what their responsibility is, instead of abolishing it, bring them together, rewrite some of the problems, give them a responsibility that you feel that they can handle. Remember, you people have the final say, who goes on in this city when it comes to the dollars. They are looking out, they're your eyes, your ears, your legs, and I'm going to tell you right now, no way in eight years I could attend every meeting without these people giving up their time for a minimum of thirty, twenty dollars a month in a hard year. And excuse me. It's okay.
They're going to stay now, they just got a raise.
But it's tough. It's very hard. These people are a advisory group. They're neither an administrative group, or they're a legislative group. They are there to let you know what is needed, not to abolish it and attack that way. No, I think it's wrong. Tabled. Sit down with the commission, maybe restructure the, the, the bylaws. Set up a court. I know, there is nothing in the, oh, look, I got a whole thing on the house, but I think commissions are important. The Recreation Commission is very important, and like Ruth said, because of what your assets are, what your expenditures are, it's a big budget, and it takes more than six heads, or excuse me, seven heads, the mayor's telling us about the saying, to make that decision. Budget time, there's everything isn't there. And I tell you one thing again, it comes down to that mighty dollar. If it isn't there to spend, you shouldn't have it working.
It is not, the, the, we do need advisory committees, and that is a good word, advisory committee. It is the commission's powers that we have trouble with, with when it comes to budget times. It is the, the title of commission. We do need advisory committees. We do need someone to watch over it. It is just a matter of difference of opinion if we need a commission. We have a big DPW budget and a big DPW department, and we don't have a DPW commission. I only have a problem with the title of commission. I would like the council, the mayor to appoint a task force to look into other ways. I would like more focus with more community members involved, focusing on specific items of recreation, and that new programs to come about, which haven't come about for the kids in this community, brand-new programs that cost the taxpayer no money. It is done all over. It can be done. It doesn't seem to be getting done this way. And, and, and a very famous quote from a person I respect, and it is our mayor, and I remember this every day, and it's, if you always do what you always did, then you always get what you always got. I find the recreation in this community is, is, has failed. We need more, we need different ideas, and we certainly don't have to put that burden on the taxpayers. I do not want to hear anymore that there's no money in the budget. There are clever people, the Jerry Shremps, that do it without a burden to the taxpayer, and that's what I, I've come for, those are my reasons. It was not because of the different personalities on the Recreation Commission. It was the dynamics of the group that I felt has failed the city, and I would like to look into doing something else. So I would ask this, this council to bring this to a vote tonight.
I would just point towards, if I may, just point towards the illustration I just completed, where the Recreation Commission worked hard throughout the year on that one particular account, and where they had the foresight and knowledge to bring that account to a zero operational expense to the taxpayer, whereas now we have a fifty thousand dollar tax subsidy. I cannot understand where you say that their wisdom is not welcome and, and should be received.
I didn't say that it wasn't welcome, Jimmy. You didn't listen to me.
Motion to table.
Mayor, may I speak?
We close the hearing, Mr. Sir. But you're having discussion now.
I called, I called for a vote.
It's a motion to table. A motion to table.
Well, the gentleman is the chairman for the last few moments of the Recreation Commission. I would like to hear what he had to say.
Well, and plus that too, Mayor, you did close the public hearing, and Kathy spoke after that.
And so did, and so did others.
So I think that we-
Mr. Thorpe. Go ahead.
May I speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
You people have put this commission on public display, and I'm asking you right now to vote on it tonight. There's not one commissioner that hasn't lost sleep over this. Couple of things have come up here. Flexibility and quick response, Mr. Cavallaro, suggesting to get a task force together. What is this commission? Is it a like of task force? Yes, it is. I guess nobody clarified what Chapter twenty-three is. Would the city attorney read that and clarify the responsibilities of this commission as it stands now? This commission has come to you on four different occasions. We've asked to meet with the mayor, common council, city attorney, to clear up our concerns, review procedures that are to be followed, open lines of communication, and set a team concept in motion. Four different occasions, and you've, you've put us on display. Kathy's come up with some ideas for recreation that isn't going to cost taxpayers anything. Would you care to share them with us now?
I, I didn't say that. I said, there are ideas out there from people, and, and there are ways to do recreation without costing the taxpayer.
Would you care to share with them? Share with us right now, some of those ideas.
No, I, no, I don't care to do that.
You don't care to communicate? You don't care to come across?
Not here.
Where?
We just called for a vote to abolish or not to abolish the Recreation Commission.
Again, you've put us on public display. You, you level idle accusations towards this commission with no foundation. So let's get it over with tonight. Let's take a vote on it.
Let's.
That's what you want.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to table. Would you please take a roll? Call them.
Alderman Lincoln.
No.
Alderman Tiramigi.
To table? No.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
No.
Alderman Trowbridge.
No.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion to table is defeated.
Please read the resolution.
For as public members of the council and all in attendance have had an opportunity to express their views regarding the said proposed local law, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fulton hereby adopts the proposed local law to abolish Chapter twenty-three of the city code entitled Recreation Commission. Anybody want to offer that? I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Please call a roll.
Alderman Lincoln.
No.
Alderman Tiramigi.
I'd like to apologize to the Recreation Commission. I feel in some sense that perhaps my involvement may have something to do with what is taking place here. You gentlemen and the ladies that have been on this commission over the last fifteen months, I had a great privilege to work with you. To this motion, no.
Alderman Weston.
Obviously, I made the motion to, to table the resolution. I certainly felt that there's some more input that we could look at, but what I'm hearing now from the commissioners and from the aldermen is that they want to vote tonight. And certainly, they have heard my concerns before concerning the setup of the charter for the Recreation Commission. Though, still, I still say the lack of attendance, which indicates to me a lack of interest. Even though we had many good commissioners, we had, also had poor commissioners. So therefore, based on that reasoning, I vote yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
I do want to say that you guys just said that we don't want to talk. We had it tabled. We were making a stop. I vote yes.
I'll add to that. There are good people that have served on that commission, and being a commission gives that group under state law a great deal of authority and responsibility. In corporate life, if you owned a corporation and you were the chairman of the board of directors and the board of directors of a corporation, and you had a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year department, you wouldn't put it under the care and supervision of someone that you paid ten dollars a month to. Tell you that because it is my intention, working with the council, to within the next seven days, appoint a committee of people in the community and councilmen to straighten out and work on, provide input into our recreation program in this city. You can count on that.
Pardon?
I said, all your political acts.
Well, Mayor, I've had a longstanding history and employment in the field of recreation. I would ask if you would put me on that task force.
Certainly will. Read the rest, next resolution, please.
Presenting the council held on February seventh, city clerk was authorized, directed to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting on March seventh, relative to a proposed local law to amend Section C eighty-eight of the city charter entitled Sanitation Department. The mayor will now declare the hearing.
Purpose of this public hearing is to get input in the change in the charter, making the water and sewer department responsible for sanitary sewers in the community. Does anyone wish to speak on this issue? Anyone from the council have anything to say about it?
No.
No. No comments? Declare the hearing closed.
Now therefore be resolved, the city Fulton hereby adopts the proposed local law to amend Section C eighty-eight of the city charter entitled Sanitation Department. I'll move it.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Alderman Lincoln.
Yes.
Alderman Tiramigi.
They have to miss him.
Alderman Weston.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge.
Yes.
Alderman Allen.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next public hearing deals with delinquent water and sewer charges. Can you explain it, Mr. Mayor Bead?
Yes, this is a technical amendment to our, to the local law for the collection of water from water and sewer bills. It simply would require the city to also notify the county when there's a delinquent water bill to be added to the tax bill, since the county actually directs the tax bill.
Anyone? I'll declare the hearing open. Does anyone want to talk about this issue? Anyone on the council have any comments?
No.
I'll declare the hearing closed. Somebody want to offer that resolution?
I'll move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Next public hearing deals with our special assessment for violations of our garbage and trash law. Would you please read the resolution?
Meeting of the council held on February seventh, clerk was authorized, directed to advertise this meeting on March seventh, relative to proposed local law to amend Title fourteen of the city charter entitled Assessment and Taxation by adding Section C two sixty-three B I to be entitled Garbage Collection and Disposal District Special Assessment Without Notice for Multiple Violations. The mayor, Bullard, will now declare the hearing open.
The purpose of amending that particular section of the charter is to, we've had a lot of trouble with multiple violations at the same property address, people putting things out to the curb. We're now required to give them a seven-day notice, and we give them the seven-day notice, they either take the stuff off the curb or do something with it, and then again, the week later, the stuff is back out at the curb. From now on, they get one seven-day notice in a year for trash out at their curb. If it's out there the second time, we just pick it up and charge them for it. Declare the hearing open. Does anybody have any comments on that? Anybody from the council? Declare the hearing closed. Somebody want to offer the resolution?
I'll move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you read the next resolution, please?
For the meeting the council held on February seventh, clerk was authorized, directed to advertise for public hearing for this meeting on March seventh, relative to a proposed local law to adopt the Property Conservation Code, which would replace the existing state housing code. Mayor Bullard will declare the hearing open.
This is a consolidation, about eighty-five percent of what's being proposed is a consolidation of existing laws that are on the books. There have been some new sections added, things like house numbering, which will be a requirement of nine-one-one. You have to have a number physically on your house that's been added to the Property Conservation Code. This code was compiled by Mr. Vaughn, and perhaps you'd like to talk about it a little
Yeah, the, the Property Conservation Code was introduced last month at the council, and copies have been available in my office for the last month. We've given out some fifty copies during that month, besides the twenty-four that were given out in the meeting, and about twenty tonight. Since the last meeting, I have met with real estate people, developers, I've met with general public, I've met in neighborhood groups, to explain the Property Conservation Code and listen to their input. We've had much input on it, which I'm very happy for. I sat down with them and resolved the questions that could be resolved, changed the codes, and those codes are reflected in the new copies which you now have, and those, those changes are all underlying. I believe the document is now pretty well complete, and, and all the people that have expressed concerns, I've met with, and unless someone else has comments, I'm, I'm satisfied with the document at this time.
Any comments on this? Anyone wish to speak of it? I'd need your name.
Bradet Beals, Fulton, New York, twenty-two Sawway Drive. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I oppose this whole thing. Most of this is covered under New York State and also covered under the National Electrical Code, and all it's doing in here is going to hurt the people. There's more of this coming up later on that's even going to hurt the people more. They didn't put it in here, I don't know why, but it is coming up. Eventually, what's going to happen? The homeowner will not be able to do anything in his own home at all. He's going to have to hire everything done, and that's taking the rights away from the homeowner, and it shall not be. You read through here- If you read through here, you'll find it. Like I say, there's more coming up. They propose a fee. Anything under $500 is $15 to get a permit. Got nothing against that at all. Okay? The way it is written now, you get an electrical one, say for an outlet or anything like that, anything under $500, the city, with that permit, the $15 fee inspects it, is what is coming up. Is they're going to drop that inspection, and you're going to have to get an inspector. One inspection agency has said they will inspect for $30. So if you're going to put in a $15, $20 plug, you're going to add $45 to it. That's outrageous. There's no reason for it whatsoever. Now, the guy that dreamed these up came from Syracuse. I think you ought to go back to Syracuse. I'm totally opposed to any of this. And I suggest that the common council either table this or even disband it. Because this is not right to the people of the city of Fulton. And another thing, I have another one here that probably the people do not have. It says it comes from the electrical board. Truly, it probably did. In here, it tells about some of the things that are going to come up. You haven't got it yet, you probably know about it, though. And like I say, the homeowner is not going to be able to do anything for himself. He's not even going to be able to drive a nail, technically. That's improvement. That's changing of the structure. Any changing of the structure required a permit. Driving a nail on a wall is changing the structure of a building. And that is not right at all. The people in Fulton. And not only that, it says the electrical board. True. Do you know that the electrical board consists of three people who do not live inside the city of Fulton? Only two members, voting members of that board, live inside the city of Fulton. The other three live in Bonneville. I don't think they should be on the board.
Thank you.
Philip Blair, 302 Pratt Street. I have a couple of concerns. For one is this new revised code. I mean, we have copies of the original version, and all of a sudden, we have changes in it. In the original version, it gave too much authority to allow the commissioner to enter households, as far as I'm concerned. That's one of the things I fought against Pointon's building code when he tried to push it through. It gives the commissioner the ability to change or amend the codes without the common council's approval, without going through the city charter. There are a lot of things in there that affect the homeowners as far as doing work in their houses. And there's lots of things that are invasions of privacy. And I'm strongly against this, and I'll fight this thing all the way to the bank, folks. Because when you give somebody the city's authority to go into your house at any time, and if they refuse you, then you haul them into court, and then you say that you're going to make them responsible for any fees incurred. Now we're getting back into the Nazi regime. And if this council passes this, you can really bet you won't be here next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ken Myers, 1253 Facy. I went through this code, and I highlight a few items. Says there's a requirement to have lights and ceilings of every room in your house. My house is 29 years old. I got three bedrooms that don't have ceiling, light ceilings, ceilings and their lights, excuse me. Outlets in a bathroom. I mentioned this to Mr. Vaughn a week ago. He said, "Well, take it out of your medicine cabinet and stick it in a wall." But I can't do that. I got to have a higher W because I'm not legally an electrician. But you told me to do it, so really, you were wrong. House letters, got to be a certain size on your house. A lot of people don't have numbers on their house. I was a mailman, I know. Probably thirty percent of the houses don't even have numbers. They got to be a certain size. Labeling on your panel box, your electrical box. As I said to him, and he agreed, fifty percent of them in the city aren't even labeled. And he has a right to enter your house at any time. Don't drive into my house. The grass has a limit, can only be eight inches high. Or they can mow it and charge you for it. Sidewalks shall be safe. Mayor, you've got an awful responsibility to level those sidewalks throughout this city because a lot of them are on city land. They got to be leveled. It's going to cost you millions of dollars to adhere to this code. Ceilings have to be a minimum of seven and a half feet tall. Stairs going up or downstairs, you'll have to have a light in every stairway. Cellars shall be free from dampness. How many seventy, eighty-year-old homes are free from dampness within this city? No gas heating equipment or drills. You can't have them on your porch and light them up anymore because they're within violation of the code. Drains in the floors surrounding your pools, that's a requirement. I believe there is a need for the code, but most of this entire package is new appropriately on page sixty, and it says solid waste. Thank you.
Alice Taboda, 12 Buffalo Street. I haven't been coming to these meetings, so I haven't been keeping up too much except what I read in the paper. And I read about this code, and tonight, I haven't had time to read through it. I only opened it at one page, and it said something about paint. Now, if there's going to be trouble with paint, why don't they just get to the paint companies and tell you what you can use, not tell us what we can use after we get it in our house? Because my husband's painted our house for the last forty-five years, and if he has to have somebody come and tell him now what kind of paint to use, I don't think he's going to be too happy about it. There's an awful lot of things in here that people have been mentioning. I think it's terrible that they're going to do all this, that you can't do anything in your home. We bought an old home forty-five years ago. My husband and I have worked on it diligently to bring it up to par. Now they're putting these new HUD things, and the rest of us who paid our homes and made them decent to live in, we're suddenly being told we can't do anything anymore. And this is discouraging.
Dan, could you clarify, Mr. Vaughn, could you clarify just the point about the individual homeowner? I think there's-
I didn't believe there was that much misunderstanding. First of all, this has nothing to do with the code, as far as electric code, except for there are some provisions in here for some electrical requirements. It has nothing to do with permits. It has nothing to do with fees. It has nothing to do with telling you what kind of paint to paint your house. It says you may need to paint your house, but it doesn't say what kind you can do it. In no way does it restrict anybody from doing anything on their own property. There is not one provision in here. So all that you've heard up till now is not true. I'm sorry to tell you that, but it's not true. Simply, clearly. It has nothing to do with permits, fees. Furthermore-
It could deal with-
It worries you when you read that you can't do anything in your house when we've been doing it for forty-five years.
You can, you're a homeowner. You can't do anything.
You can do it. There's laws that says you can do it. Okay? So, I mean, although what the first gentleman came up and talked about is some proposals that we've been talking about in the committee have nothing to do with this. This does not, is not reflected in this document. He was talking about something that isn't even being addressed here tonight. As far as right to entry goes, there was some question about it, so I redefined that section. And let me try to find that for you.
Page sixty-eight.
Page sixty-eight. And we've now added a paragraph in there to cover that. It says, "The interior of owner-occupied residential dwellings, or owner-occupied units within two-family residential dwellings, or owner-occupied units within multiple dwellings, shall not be subject to systematic requirements, or inspections, I'm sorry, as required by rental units, except in the case of emergencies or otherwise provided by law." I think that's pretty clear, straightforward. We're not knocking on people's doors and telling them they have to do things.
But Dan, Mr. Vaughn, paragraph A, paragraph A, that same section-
Yes.
Reads, "The bureau chief," I'll read it in part, "the bureau chief shall be authorized to enter any premises at any reasonable time during business hours for the purpose of performing his duties under this code." I think that's what people are speaking to.
That's why I added this paragraph.
And by direct inference, as you read further in this code, it says that any referral that you may get, a complaint that you may get, you're qualified to act upon according to this code. Thereby, if I say Mr. Weston's has an electrical problem that I know of, and I report that to you, are you now going to knock on his door and check that complaint out?
I have a legal obligation by law already-
That's I think what these people are addressing.
To, even without this code, right now, I would have to go and address that question. Now, you have to remember this, too, that just because I knock on your door doesn't mean you have to let me in. And I want everybody to understand that. We're not no Gestapo here, you know, although we've been accused of being that, we're not that. We want to work with the people here, but we do get called on cases of emergencies, we do get complaints-
There's no question with-
And we've tried to follow up.
Yeah, I mean, you're under the purview there, and there's no question. Everybody wants safe homes that are not hazardous. But when you knock on Mr. Weston's door and he does not give you entry, I think I read in the code that then you may take administrative action.
No, no, I have to go, no. The only option I have, Dan, is to get a warrant-
Well-
From a judge. And I want to tell you, and I want to tell you something. The only way I'm going to get in that house with a warrant for a judge is I'm going to have to have good probable cause. The what? Paper in motion? I don't, can you refer me to a section? I don't remember that, maybe it's a misprint.
Mr. Langley had a-
Yeah, I just have a couple of things here.
Sure.
Dan, if you wouldn't mind, would you stay there? You can answer something.
In regards to the house numbers, that's a 911 issue. That's a requirement if we ever get 911 service.
Correct.
In regards to, I'm on the plumbing and heating board. In regards to homeowners doing work in their own home, nobody is saying that that can't happen. Every homeowner has the right by law to do that. There's nothing in here about any of that. The other thing, too, is you're either going to adopt a code like this, or you're going to have rental properties with ten tons of garbage in the basement that, "Oh, by the way, Mr. Vaughn, we're getting this pugnet odor coming out of this place, and, oh, by the way, well, I can't do anything about it." So these are very clear-cut and dry issues. I don't think you're going to have a Gestapo with badges running around to people's homes in the middle of the night looking for violators. It just isn't going to work that way. We're trying to look at this as cleaning up the city and making it safe for people. I look at a lot of these issues as safety first. And if by making something safe, you are lightly inconveniencing someone, there has to be, what would you rather have? Somebody lose a life because something wasn't done properly, or because a tenant is in a building that is unsafe? I would rather see this take place than somebody getting injured. Thank you.
I think in response to that, Mr. Langley, there are laws already on the books, and garbage piling up in the cellar, the Department of Public Health can answer and respond to that.
That's correct, but there's no enforcement capabilities in that legislation. So just by saying you have a law on the books that says, "Do not put trash in your basement for ten years." So what?
I worry-
There's no enforcement-
I worry about a bureaucracy we are maybe creating here in that now we have, or about to have or enact legislation that we are caused to enforce, which translates into additional personnel, and personnel to inspect and so forth. That's my main concern, is in Alderman, is cost.
If I can address that. In fairness, instead of taking pop shots at Mr. Vaughn because he doesn't live here, let's take a look at what he's done with that bureau. Let's take a look at how much revenue is raised in 1994 versus 1993 versus 1992 versus 1991. Even if you compute in every little misnomer, the city is obligated to do these things anyways, which you never had before, was a way of enforcing it or a way of penalizing violators. What this gives you is enforcement capabilities, penalized capabilities, and you're not burdening the taxpayers by paying for somebody for violating the law. Why should I, as a taxpayer, pay the city to remove some guy's garbage? I had nothing to do with it. Thank you.
But I think we're not talking about only garbage in this code.
I might add a couple more points on that, a couple other points that were brought up. For example, grass at eight inches tall needs to be cut.
We have it now.
It's now law, people. We already have it in the books. I've transferred local law into this code. The main reason why this code was adopted is not to get rid of what we got, but to incorporate it all in one document, and so that I can now address it to all buildings, not just residential buildings. About fifteen percent of complaints that come into my office deal with commercial structures. I cannot cite any commercial structure under our present law. Without this, my hands are tied to do anything about that. I need this in order to do that. As far as swimming pools and putting fences around them, they're code now. If people don't know that, they are code. I'm here to tell you they're code. You can change your own receptacle in your house. You don't need electrician to do that. They only need electrician when you're going to extend or put in new electrical systems. There are many things in here that you can do yourself, that the law allows you to do now. Law allows you to do, if you're owner-occupied, you can do your own plumbing. Certain section your own plumbing can do within your own unit, within your own building. You can do certain electrical things yourself. I may not necessarily agree with that, because I have a problem, because a person owns a house, he doesn't necessarily become an electrician and a plumber. But I understand the right of the people to do the thing they want in their own home. This is not, doesn't have anything to do with that. This code is strictly to make me, to give me the freedom to enforce the law in all buildings in the city. That was the original intent. If there's any other questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Mr. Walchett?
My name is Donald Walsh, and I live at 51 East 10th Street. I just heard a comment from a gentleman about inspections that are in this code here. Did I build a brand-new home in another county? I did all electrical work myself. I did all the plumbing myself, and I had an inspector come and look at it. Which is a requirement of a law of another county that is similar to this here. They didn't bother me, but I had to have an inspector come and look at it. There was a fireman and a company that was hired by this county, and I had no problems whatsoever. In fact, the man told me that it was a better job than some of the electricians do. Hey.
Take him out of here, there you go.
Okay, any other comments? Comments from the council?
Can I just say one?
Oh, yeah, I think we all do.
I want to listen to the people. It would be really helpful if they point out specifically, because we're willing to listen if there's a problem, and we can take it back to Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Beals, this gentleman, I think, wants to speak.
My name's Peter Lake, I'm RD1 Hannibal. I have property in the city of Fulton. I think it is on, I'm just not speaking very long.
Your name's Mr. Lake, you're RD1-
Peter Lake, RD1 Hannibal.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to see some provision put in here. If something is already safe, there's no reason why this code should make a landlord or an individual change it. There's got to be something in here where if your cellar is not completely dry, but it's still safe, you're not riding anything out, hey, forget it. It's okay. It's an existing situation. Another thing is, I don't think this is ready to be voted on yet. I have one instance, but there's others, and I need more time to talk to this gentleman about that. The one instance that I'm going to point out is page forty-eight, number eighteen. It says, "Except where grounded receptacles are provided, every bathroom and half bathroom shall contain at least one wall-mounted GFI-protected receptacle outlet." Receptacle outlets are an internal part of medicine that are, are an internal, yeah, internal. "Internal part of medicine cabinets or light fixtures shall not be counted as required outlets. However, such receptacle outlets shall be GFI-protected." Now, number one, what's this saying to me is like, in a bathroom, if I have a rounded plug, it's okay. It does not have to be GFI. But if I have a non-grounded plug, it does have to be GFI. My main concern with this is if you guys in this go home tonight, and you look in your bathrooms, you'll notice that everything that you have in there, your electric dryers, your curling irons, your electric razors, are all two-pronged. They're not going to utilize a grounded- They're not gonna utilize a grounded receptacle. So, a grounded receptacle is not anywhere near as good as a GFI and it's the same thing as having a two-pronged receptacle in there to begin with. If you're gonna change this, my point is change it right.
I think a grounded receptacle is now code, is it not, Mr.?
Yes, it is. It's, it is the code up until the GFI came in, uh, in new construction, which was only about three years ago. Um, I, I, I've talked with this gentleman in detail about it, I appreciate him coming in. Also talked with other people who own real estate in the city. And what we got down, this is probably the toughest question of all to answer in this code. And, and basically what I got down to is, I felt that a grounded circuit pre, pre, provided a certain level of protection that was not provided by a grounded, by a non-grounded circuit. That's number one. Number two is a GFI circuit provides additional, additional protection that a grounded circuit doesn't. In the older home where you have only a two-line circuit, that circuit worries me because there's no way to protect the individual with that circuit. Person could get electrocuted very easily, all you have to do is have a change in polarity in the line and someone touch something, have a, have a contact to ground, and, and you're done. With a grounded circuit, it's a little different, there's some intermediate protection there between the grounded circuit because if you produce a dead short, you're gonna trip the breaker, the ground will take the override, uh, on the, on the neutral i- if it should go wrong. There are a lot of little things that keep getting added on, it's kinda like adding up the steps and each one makes it a little bit better. But if you take a person who owns a lot of homes, say seventy in this city, and you make him change what now, three years ago, was the state-of-the-art, i.e. grounded appliance circuits, grounded circuits, and now say, that's no longer any good, you gotta go to GFI's, I have a problem with that. I mean, for the level of difference of protection that you get, I really had a real problem with that. So, that's why I put where grounded circuits are provided, that if you're really exempted for this. But if they're not provided, I felt that the, that the only other way you can do it is to rewire or put in a GFI. A GFI costs fifteen bucks, rewiring it would be substantial. So, that's why I chose this method. Uh, I understand this gentleman's opinion, but I have six other opinions from other people who didn't want to incur that cost, and I had to respect that position. And I felt that I wasn't giving up that much indifference. That's why it was done.
Well, you would agree that if you don't use the grounded plug, if you're using an electric razor, it's a two-pronged, whether or not you have a grounded system, if it falls in the sink while you're using it and your sink's full of water, you're, you're not gonna be any more protected than if you just had a two-wire system.
Um, there, there's a whole bunch of things that add into what makes something safe. In any system, you have, in order, if you're gonna get electrocuted, you have to have a path to ground. Uh, for example, let me give you an example, suppose you're sitting in a bathtub that's made of fiberglass, um, that has plastic drain pipe, okay? And is, the tub might be fed by copper pipe on the water side, okay? And I have a receptacle, uh, on the wall, um, that's a grounded receptacle. And I drop, someone pushes the hairdryer, uh, which does not have, like the new ones do, a built-in GFI in the system. What would happen is you wouldn't get electrocuted because you have no contact, no path to ground in the system because the water pipe is plastic, it's non-bonded, there's no, no contact point to ground. What would happen is if you had a, if it was hooked up to old copper pipe, yeah, you got a problem with that one, sure. But there are certain things that, you know, every situation you got to look at differently. That's one where, in my opinion, wouldn't happen, what you'd do is you'd get an internal short between the working mechanism of the hairdryer and the thing would trip it out on the ground side, it would be a dead short. What you'd get is a dead short within the unit itself. But every instance is different. I just couldn't come up with enough, enough ideas, um, where I felt that we needed to go that additional step because of the cost involved for that additional protection.
I appreciate your concern with that. But as I said, this isn't quite ready yet, I think that you need another month anyway to further refine this. You've refined this in the last few days, one of them that you and I just talked about, uh, page fifty-one, number four, number A, letter A, minimum of two receptacle outlets in every habitable space at least ten by ten. So, that, that is, uh, different from the last time I read that.
Yeah, it was eight by ten, that was per your request.
Right, and the question I have, so if it's at eight by ten, how many do I need, none?
No, you need two in every ten, eight by ten, habitable space at least ten by ten in size. Um, it is only under, for new construction. If you don't have them in a room of ten by ten size and you only have one receptacle, yes, that says you have to have two. This is not written to grandfather. This is one of the changes in the code that would be a change that's above and beyond the law right now.
I, the way I read this, it says a minimum of two receptacle outlets in every habitable space at least ten by ten in size. So, if it's any smaller, you don't need any?
No, I didn't say that.
That's what I, that's the way it reads.
I know, but the law requires one.
It needs to be, it needs to be changed, then.
Yeah, it, well, no.
You're saying eight by ten, we can get away with one?
Right. That's what the law says.
No, don't need, we don't no longer need a permanently-installed light as was the HUD requirement?
You, you have two things that HUD requires, either two receptacles.
Right.
Or a receptacle and a switching receptacle, one of the two.
A permanently-installed light?
Yes.
There doesn't have to be another receptacle?
Right. That can substitute for a second receptacle.
And that's the way the whole thing should be.
That's the way the law is for, for HUD, okay?
As I said when I started, this, this needs more refining. I asked that you table it till some other day.
One more comment, Mr. Beals.
He had enough of his. Seems though I'm entitled a little more time.
That's why you're getting it right now.
Yeah, that's probably why I'm gonna give a little. Now, what he's saying is untrue. His intent is that every house in the city of Fulton, whether it was built a hundred years ago or whether it was built three years ago, that everything be brought up to date as what the date's code is. And that's gonna cost homeowners a fortune. And another thing, if he's gonna go into different places, he's already stated that he can't get into industrial places. He has not stated it to you, but he has stated it to me. He says he has no control over that. There are some of the worst violators there is, I oughta know. I worked for one for thirty-eight years and it darn near killed me. That's why I'm in disability right now. But yet, they say they can't go into these. I checked on one the other day, supposed to be two permits for it. Supposed to be a licensed electrician from the city of Fulton. It wasn't a licensed electrician from the city of Fulton who was doing the work, it was their own gang. Their own crew that goes around. These places like Fae's and all these places like this, they have their own crews. Even Wendy's, Burger King, all of them have their own crews come in and do things. They don't get permits. That's a proven fact. Yet these guys won't check on them, they're too big, the monkey wit, we can't touch them. And I'm telling you the truth. This thing should be thrown out entirely, and I mean it, but it's gonna cost the homeowners money and there's no question about it. What he wants is everything brought up to today's date of what the law requires, and he's added more. And really what he wants is down the road, is not just this grounded receptacle. He wants a GFI within six feet on both sides of the sink. Not just a grounded one, he wants a GFI. It is required now in bathrooms in new constructions and in different places, in the cellar, outdoors. You must have one on the front of the house, you must have one on the back of the house. You must have one in the bathroom. If you have something in the cellar, it's a designated circuit, you put in one single plug. If you've got a freezer down there, that's one single plug, I'm not saying a duplex. And I'll remind everybody in this room, which they probably don't know, I hold the oldest licensed electrician in the city of Fulton, forty-one years. So, I know what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would just like to make a couple of comments on that. Number one, we're not changing everything in your house to bring it up to today's electrical code. Only two items are addressed in this code that are changes above and beyond what's required today. The two GFIs that we're talking about, one in the bathroom and a, and a couple in the kitchen. That's more than an existing building has to comply with today. Those are the only two things that this addresses, other than the two receptacles and the rooms. Commercial buildings, yeah, no wonder we got a problem, no wonder he's got a four back or whatever he's got. That's why I wanna get into buildings. I can't go in those commercial buildings, people don't understand it, okay? I need this code to be able to address all properties in the city.
Thank you. Anybody from the council?
Ken Myers. God forbid if someone should have a fire in their house, the insurance company that you're insured with comes in and finds out that you're out and out of the code, some insurance companies do not have to pay for burning down of your home? Take that into consideration when you make this code, it's law if you do.
Thank you. Anybody from the, Mr., anybody from the council? I have a, I have some comments. I also. Mr. Beals, the rules of the common council are that we allow one, maybe two.
He spoke all four times.
I understand, he's explaining questions that the council has.
I'd like to explain what he just said, too.
Counsel want to hear this?
It'll take one minute.
It's last thing.
I, I think, I think that the people should.
If they will read their insurance, if you had a fire, you're only required, when that house was built, to be that code, it's not the code of today. If your house was built twenty years ago and it passed inspection twenty years ago for that code twenty years ago, that's what your insurance goes by. It doesn't go by, if that's the case, every time you change something, you would have to add something. Tell them to read his policy and he'll find out. When that house was built and it was passed inspection at that time, that's what counts, not today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I had some comments, and I touched on it a little bit earlier during this hearing. Uh, my, one of my concerns is cost. When we formed this bureau a couple of months ago, uh, I did ask the question, at what cost is this gonna, is this gonna take? Last week, Mr. Vaughn alluded to the fact that if this code is passed, uh, he hopes to hire full-time personnel for the enforcement part of this. Number one, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna sit here and take on additional costs for the city taxpayer. Number two, I have no confidence at this point in, in our ability to enforce any of these new laws that we're doing. I, I, I've seen an illustration not too long ago of how we did not enforce some of our new code. I'm concerned that at, at a time when governments are, are moving towards reducing its size and getting smaller, we here in the city seem to wanna just grow larger and taxpayers can't really afford this. Need I remind anybody, uh, this county is the highest tax county and the highest tax state in the world. Uh, in the city, per capita income, according to nineteen ninety data, is eleven thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. That doesn't buy very much. That is far below, uh, that, uh, per capita of the county. There is a sixteen-point-three percent population living below the poverty level in Fulton, New York. And male unemployment rate is thirteen-point-two percent, as opposed to ten-point-four percent overall. So, you can see, we do have our economic problems here. But as far as this code, this code is quite comprehensive, seventy pages in detail. Now, I've spent a lot of my personal time going over it and trying to understand it. And many citizens are seeing and hearing for the first time some of the highlights of this, of this code. Uh, over the past two weeks, citizens I've been in contact with are trying to understand the provisions, just as I am. And many don't like what they see and hear right now. Uh, a large percentage of this document, uh, is pre-existing. Uh, I've been reading it, the seventy pages, and cross-referencing it with a sixty-eight-page document that was proposed just three years ago. And I see very little change, there is some technical change, but there's very little change. What Mr. Vaughn and perhaps much of this council may not recollect, a housing code of this substance, of this nature, was brought before previous council, nineteen ninety-one. That proposal, as, as I said, was very similar to this. Uh, it was soundly rejected by the common council with a five-to-one vote in that, after two public hearings. The wisdom, three years ago, uh, when this code was proposed, uh, it was, it was too lengthy in content, it imposed restrictions that would prohibit any home in the city from passing inspection. And the very fact that an inspection of a one- and two-family hall was, a home was seen as invasion of privacy. The Fulton Landlords Association, uh, even became involved in that. I feel since this document will affect the privacy and pocketbooks of every citizen in this city, our citizens deserve another public comment period. So, they may be well-advised as to what will be the thrust upon them here. Uh, make no mistake about it, this document is, if enacted, uh, this Code Bureau will be granted enormous powers if you sit down and read this thing. There are enormous, broad powers. Staging a public, public hearing just to fulfill the statutory requirements of local law is not enough. And then postponing a vote here tonight, that will not be enough. It's our duties as aldermen to be upfront and fair, we pledge to represent this community and the constituency thereof. So, we need to hear what, what the constituents, uh, feel about this, truly feel about this, once they get a copy of this and read it and go over it. And, uh, what took place in this room here three years ago, when they, uh, when the, this code was, uh, rejected, the, uh, courtroom, uh, roundly applauded the council for voting it down. I can't see how those concerns have changed or faded in three years' time. So, I would ask this council that, uh, we should have some discussion on about maybe a second comment period and not make a vote on this tonight.
Um, I, I just wanna clear, my total intent, this is very thick and our total intent, it is a very comprehensive plan. In fact, it really isn't that comprehensive, but it was our intent not to table this, to listen to concerns. We are trying to have ward meetings, we might not, might have to have another ward meeting. And I suggest maybe that you could have some ward meetings because at the ward meeting, uh, the people are able to sit down at the table intimately with Mr. Vaughn, he was extremely helpful in clarifying some of this misconception that he can barge into your house and, and bang into your house. Eighty-five percent of this code is totally in existence now, that's what our Code Bureau follows. Ten percent of this code is, just has to do with smoke detectors, the other five percent is new. And maybe the new thing in a smaller form would be easier for the public because this is probably very intimidating and most people wouldn't understand this, which is all existing now, everyone has to live by eighty-four, uh, eighty-five percent of it now. It's the five percent new that could be consolidated, maybe it would be easier for people and out for general consumption. Any new items in there that are not familiar to the public or are not now seen, I think that would be helpful because this does look very intimidating and is not meant to be. I, as, as an alderman, one of the, the biggest things I have, and I, and I understand that, there are some things that maybe landlords will have to do. My primary concern is for the health and safety of the people of the city of Fulton. And I have had many meetings with Mr. Vaughn and, and certainly it is, that is his primary concern. Um, I, I give Mr. Vaughn a lot of credit, he opens his doors to anyone that has questions, who has concerns. He will accommodate and change, understand financial capabilities as long as it is, does not, um, go against the health and safety of the people who rent and sometimes don't even understand what they're getting into when they rent. As an alderman, the thing that I ran on was code enforcement, and there was a reason. There was a, a cry or a plea at almost every door. I have spent my life putting money into my house, and I have beautiful homes in the Fifth Ward, and, and people are investing their money, and they were extremely discouraged because of some of these dilapidated houses that do not live up to code, people who do not keep their property up. People were losing money, people who, who spent their whole life, and sometimes it's their only means of, of retirement, were losing, could not sell their house. I'll give you a specific. On one corner, I have a home that is in deplorable condition, is owned by a landlord who does not live in the city of Fulton. This landlord never cared, never will, never did, and is getting out of the business, being foreclosed. He's, he was terrible landlord. And these people suffered by the hands of this landlord who did not. And these people suffered by the hands of this landlord, who did not live in these kind of conditions, who lived in fine conditions. I wouldn't have this code if I could pick up every one of those homes and bring them out and place them next to those landlords' homes. Never have a code like this. Let them live next to it. But it has affected the city of Fulton. It has affected the feelings of the people, it has affected the tax base of this field. If people come in here and they feel, I hear statements, "Oh, my God, what a dump." I don't hear that anymore. I see what Dan Vaughn has done. And go ask Vaughn, and I would ask you, Mr. Terimij, to spend time with Dan Vaughn, because Dan Vaughn has done a lot in this department, and I don't believe for a minute Mr. Vaughn would ask for one person to be hired unless he could fund the money. There will be no burden on the taxpayer. The taxpayer can only gain by this code going in. As an alderman, my hands are locked because I can't give the people what they needed. They need their properties back, they needed pride in their homes. That's what they begged me for, and I will give Mr. Vaughn every tool he needs within the law to do what I was elected here to do. I feel that strongly about this. I feel strongly enough that when this is revised to the comfort of the people in Fulton, where they feel that their constitutional rights aren't violated, which in no means do I feel that that is being done in this code, if there is wording that has to be clarified, we will take the time to clarify it. He will open your doors, I will open my house, you can visit, we will get the answers together. I will be here. I agree that this is a lot for the community to take into effect, but it is meant for the intent of the health and safety of people who live here, and we will take the time. But we will work on this document until we can pass this comfortably at this council. And I believe the people do deserve the time, but I believe the people deserve this kind of a code. Thank you.
I think to just remark on one little item, you were talking about new employee, the cost they're probably would not cost the taxpayer directly, but it will be borne on the backs of the violators whom the inspectors will be checking.
Well, not violators. Let's take some of these fees, violators, violators. Let's take some of these fees that we've implemented. The taxpayers always bore the expense of companies coming in and building. We sent our inspectors out there free of charge. We didn't bear their cost. Let the individual bear the cost that's due in the building. Let it not be on the back of the taxpayer like it always was. Let these people be paid their way, just like a private business. You said that the taxes are high here. Let them bear the cost, a one-time cost. Let it not be forever on the taxpayer's back.
You're talking about new structure, and I agree 100% with you. We're talking about existing homes of a lot of years.
Of not...
Causing them to come up to code.
No.
If you're not reading that right, then maybe I'm not reading it right, but that's what it's reading.
And if you're talking about rental properties, which is the focus of this, absolutely, I want them up to code, and I want people living in safe housing. Some of these people can't afford to make those kind of choices, but I've been in those homes, and I've been in them, and I wouldn't let anyone live in there, Jim. I am ashamed of some of the homes we have here, and I'm ashamed that they have...
I've probably been in, without exaggeration, 40% of the homes in the city during my previous career, and I know what homes are like in the city.
That's right.
But then again, I do respect the economic hard times that this city experiences and the inhabitants of the city.
And we do, that most of the rental properties are for-profit in this city, and it's the homeowner and the people that pays the taxes, or the single homeowner, that is jeopardized by that, has been hurt by that. It is fine to be a landlord, and we have some fine, upstanding landlords. I want to make that clear because I often don't take the time. I have examples in my ward of people that I am extremely proud of, people who I thought I would have trouble for, and I have been surprised at their cooperation. People that some of the people on my street have to keep up with, they're so good. But I have some extremely poor landlords that I'm ashamed of, and I will do anything to get them to come up to code, to give these people the right to take their town back.
I, too, have a couple of comments, real quick. I had some people within my ward that expressed some concerns to me. They were specifically interested in the kind of authority that the bureau chief might have and whether he could make changes without much accountability. There was some concern about the inspection of premises, whether he could, or his people come into residence, and I think he cleared that up. It's obvious from what we're hearing tonight that there's a lot of concern, and rightfully so. This is an extensive document, but it's meant to do things that are going to make the city of Fulton a safer place to live. And if we have to take these kind of steps, we have to establish a priority. The fact that this kind of code was turned down three years ago, to me, just tells me that the city at that particular time wasn't ready to look at something like this, didn't have in place a code enforcement agency that was willing to step out and look at some of these things and make some changes. Now, one quick thing on the smoke detectors. That's going to be geared to multiple dwellings, and that was pointed out by my Mr. Vaughn, that had that been in effect at the fire that occurred at Joyce and Birch, and fortunately we had an alert policeman that was able to detect the fire and to help out in that situation. But had the smoke detector policy been in effect, that would have been a much easier situation. So I think that we're looking at the priority for the city, and if some of these things appear to be asking too much, it's only because we haven't asked enough before. And I think that's what our intent is, and that we're certainly not going to legislate something that's going to be not good for the city of Fulton, so...
I just got one final comment, and I promise to be very brief. What I try to bring into clarity here is, I believe 80 to 85% of this code is already inacted legislation. What we're doing here is putting it onto our books and causing to put the accent on enforcement, which means we must have the people to enforce. I worry about the cost of that. Thank you.
Clear the hearing closed. Want to read the resolution?
Are we going to table this?
Read the resolution. Read the resolution.
Public and members of the council and all in attendance have had an opportunity to express their views regarding said proposed local law. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Fulton hereby approves the proposed local law to adopt the property conservation code, which would replace the existing state housing code.
I'd like to make a motion to table the resolution.
I would second it.
Based on the fact that we just need to get more information, and obviously from what we're hearing tonight, and obviously from Mr. Vaughn's availability, his intention is to make the changes that he feels and that the entire community feel are going to be best for everybody.
Please call or roll.
Is this the table?
Yeah.
I didn't get Terimij second. Yeah, Jim.
Is there a date on it, table? Postponed till?
I would say indefinite. I think this is something, obviously, Mr. Vaughn has worked on it for six months. For us to take another couple of months would certainly, to get something in place that's going to have some teeth in it, it's going to be there for a while, so...
Can, just further, please bring your concerns to Mr. Vaughn or to your aldermen so we can have the time in these months to clarify, so that none of the problems come up the night of the meeting, that we don't have the time to look back and amend. We will work with you, he will work with you, and just please contact us.
Motion to table, please take the call or roll.
Was that a proposal to table indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
Motion to table this proposed local law indefinitely. Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Terimij?
Yes.
Alderman Weston?
Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolve that the following claims against the city of Fulton hereby refer to the city attorney. Notice a claim submitted by Judy Avery, individually impaired natural guardian of Shannon Gorman, for injuries alleged to have occurred on January 7th, the west side of the 100 block of South Second Street, when she was struck by an automobile while she was walking in the street. Notice a claim submitted by Rhonda Reponey Chapin, for medical, physical, and emotional distress, alleged to have occurred as a result of being arrested with Fulton Police Department.
Move it.
Second. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that scheduled bills payable 12 through 15 of 1995, which is previously approved by the common council auditing committee, are hereby approved.
Move it.
Second. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise received seal bids in his office in the municipal building Fulton, New York, on and before April 4th, up to 4:00 p.m., to be publicly opened at 4:15 in the council chambers of the municipal building for curb replacement sidewalk ramps on Utica and South Forest Streets in the city of Fulton in accordance with specifications prepared by the city of Fulton Engineering Department.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the city chamber will be authorized to transfer $11,000 from the A1910.49 unallocated insurance account to the A5142.2 snow removal account to help to create the one-year annual payment of $31,149 for the new snow plow for the DPW.
Move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas by petition dated January 12th, 1995, Alderman James Terimij and Alderman John Lincoln have instituted legal proceedings against the city of Fulton, whereas the direct result of the proceedings, the city attorney addressed the mayor and common council by letter dated January 24th, 1995, seeking the permission of the common council to employ outside counsel in legal matters as deemed necessary by the city attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the city attorney is hereby permitted to retain outside counsel on all matters wherein a conflict of interest is directly or indirectly created due to proceedings instituted by Alderman James Terimij and Alderman John Lincoln against the city of Fulton. Such employment of outside counsel to be at a total cost not to exceed $50,000 without further resolution of this council.
I move it, and I'd like to amend this, to read $7,500 for a conversation with the city attorney.
$50,000 downward to $7,500?
There is one particular case, and he will come back at each time. $7,500.
Second.
I'll second for discussion.
Was it, did you move to amend?
I moved to amend. The figure.
What was the entire, $7,500?
It's $7,500 without further resolution of this common council. Only the figure needs to be amended. Sorry, Jim.
Yeah, that's all right. Motion to amend. Second.
Yeah, we'll second.
Okay, that's a motion to, for what figure?
The figure was amended from $50,000 to $7,500. And it's been seconded.
Do we, can we say what the $7,500 is for?
That's not up to me. It's the request of the...
I'm asking the attorney.
Well, for any case that comes up where there may or may be a conflict of interest?
No particular at this time.
There's one at this time.
Can you say, or no?
Timothy Coyne.
Okay.
I think early on when we were going through the budget, the city attorney indicated that he would be accepting less than the full salary, and that at different times that he would be asking for outside counsel when it was a specific responsibility.
Just make one quick comment, and I'll be brief. Harley Thompson. Last council meeting, I heard how reprehensible it was that the First and Second Ward alderpersons filed a claim against the city, so I want to ask just a couple yes or no questions. In November of 93, as an alderperson-elect, Ms. Trowbridge, did you initiate legal action against the city as one of the taxpayers, over procedure?
Yes, I did.
Mayor, after you...
I know one that said reprehensible.
Okay, well, I'm just asking, just open questions. And when you left the Fulton Urban Renewal, mayor...
Well, without going into detail here, if you want to call a adjournment, we can discuss it.
I don't have a problem with that.
But if you still feel that you're in conflict, then I don't have a problem with that either.
Wait just a minute. When you're done.
Who's second in this resolution?
I think Mr. Weston.
Mr. Weston, okay, now I'll go through your...
This is item 14, right? City Attorney, outside counsel. I have a copy of this, Jim, now. You've mentioned a specific case. I guess it says here that legal proceedings instituted by Alderman Terimij and Lincoln against the city have resulted in the city attorney's request to hire outside counsel. I guess I would object to that, being on this agenda. I don't know where this came from. You mentioned another case up there. I really just want to say, I don't think this is appropriate to be on the agenda. I don't know where these get printed up or anything, but who doubts this? But that does...
Thank you. Yeah, I...
Yeah. You mentioned another... I believe you mentioned the Coyne case there specifically. I don't know what's, you know, if that's what this is for, or if this is, you know, I guess I want to know why it was mentioned there.
I see that.
What's this say?
I just objected that being on there, that I don't really see where that's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, we've got the motion and a second. Women, no, not the table.
To amend.
To amend. And the motion to amend, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That's to amend. Now you've got a vote on the motion.
I'll move the amended motion.
And I'll second.
As long as we got a move and a second, my question would be, what account, are we going to be transferring money? Is this coming out of the law account or...
Law account.
Law account.
Voting on the resolution after it was carried to amend it to $7,500, is that correct?
That's correct.
I have a motion and a second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried.
Notation, the city clerk has advised this council that at this meeting on March 7th, at the proper letter of disclosure pursuant to section 803 of general municipal law has been filed with him by the following employee. That said disclosure has entered into the minutes of this council meeting on March 7th as a matter of record. Resolve that chapter 57 of the Code of the City of Fulton entitled Dogs is hereby amended to read as follows. Adoption means to deliver to any individual 18 years of age or older for the purpose of harboring a dog, of any unredeemed dog impalement pursuant to the provisions of Article 7 of the Agriculture and Market law of the State of New York, or as otherwise defined in Section 108, Paragraph 1 of the Ag and Market law of State of New York. Section 57-8A, procedure for adoption, pursuant to Section 118 of the Ag and Market law of the State of New York, and Section 57-8 of this chapter, the following procedures are hereby established for adoption of a dog. One, license fee of $15. Two, dogs are spayed and neutered within 45 days of release of custody or within 45 days after dog is six months old, whichever occurs last. Three, dogs are vaccinated against rabies within seven days after release from custody. B, the dog control officer shall have the right to prescribe reasonable rules, regulations, and forms to effectuate the intent of this section. C, the dog control officer shall have the right to seize any dog that is not in full compliance with this section without notice to the owner, and said owner shall otherwise be considered to be in violation of this chapter and subject to all fine penalties and other punishments as otherwise set forth in Article 7 of the Ag and Market law of the State of New York in this chapter.
I'll move it.
Second.
Want to second it?
Jim did.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the city clerk's report receipts and dispersments for the month of January 1995 in the amount of $9,808.79 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the city clerk's report of receipts and dispersments for the month of February 1995 in the amount of $3,910.80 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Move it. Second.
Second. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Robert Jennings... Resolve that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Robert Jennings, 46 West Fourth Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Planning Commission, effective immediately into expired February 15th, 1998, is hereby approved.
Move it.
Second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolve that this common council hereby permits recreation park, including Dennis H. Field, to open to 11:00 p.m. This resolution shall take effect from May 1st, 1995 through October 31st, 1995. This resolution is made pursuant to section 109-1 of the Parks and Recreation Ordinance.
I'll move it.
Well, Jim, are, are you okay with it? It's your ward, so I want to...
Yeah, I'll second it, and I'll mention that, I just want to indicate that, as a matter of fact, last night, the Recreation Commission took this matter up. They did give me the opportunity to canvass my ward there, and I did do that, and we have come to a mutual agreement, and this is, this is fine.
Hi, I'm Karen Imperio Cavalero, and I'm one of the team workers for the softball league. And Barry had another meeting or something he had to go to, so he told me to come up here and tell you that it doesn't just benefit the softball team, it benefits for all the other activities that are going to happen at the recreation park this year. And I want to thank Jim, I understand that you did go to some of the people, and you had no problem with it, and I want to thank you for that. And I hope this year, we have a successful league like we did last year. And one more thing, we did put a new rule, or added to our rules, is that for the women, we're going to give them a one strike and one ball count, so that would even make the plays go faster. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that the request for a zoning amendment submitted by the higher millage 144, Fulton, New York, for their property located on South Fourth Street, from R3 residential to C1 commercial, in order to establish a driveway in their parking lot to South First Street, is hereby referred to the Planning Commission, for their review and recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
Excuse me, now, is, is that for an exit on, on the first street from the Golden Corral? I believe that's correct.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carried.
It was to go to the Planning Commission?
I know.
You didn't want it to go to the Planning Commission?
Resolve that the request for a zoning amendment submitted by Jim Aluzi, RD5, Fulton, New York, for his property located at 806 South First Street, from R2 residential to C2 commercial, because the area is predominantly commercial, is hereby referred to the Planning Commission, for their review and recommendation to be returned to this council at a future meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the contract between the City of Fulton and Altel, for the purpose of securing Coyne-operated public telephone service from Altel at locations as per attached, for a period of 36 months, effective March 1st, 1995.
Move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that the city clerk, as record management officer for the City of Fulton, be authorized to dispose of records that no longer have a use, purposeful use, and/or legal purpose, in accordance with the laws of the State Education Department and the MU1 schedule as per attached.
Move it.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that the common council hereby accepts a proposal submitted by Blaslin, Bach, and Lee, dated February 24th, 1995, in the amount of $28,652 for the review of the City of Fulton Sewer Use Ordinance, Industrial Discharge Limits, and Wastewater Treatment Plant Comprehensive Performance Evaluation, and be further resolved that city chamberlain hereby authorized and directed to transfer $28,652 from the G-1990 contingent account to the G-8131.44 industrial pretreatment account to cover said costs. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
The, Mr. Mayor Beato, you want to talk about?
Yes, during the course of the last two or three months, the, we've had some meetings with the major, major industrial users of the pretreatment plant, which is basically Seawright and Nestle. And D-Boots, excuse me. And we have found, through engineers that work for those companies, and through our own Water and Sanitation Commissioner, and our own staff who work at the sewage treatment plant, that our, our legislation is highly deficient in certain areas. It's deficient in terms of its content, it's deficient in terms of how it's interpreted, it's deficient in terms of how we enforce it. We are not charging the industries what they should be charged. We frankly don't know if they're being charged too much or too little. Obviously, what the industries pay has a direct effect on what the homeowners pay. And our, through the years, the sewer use ordinance has come about through a series of amendment here and amendment there, and what you end up with is something that's not coherent, it's not comprehensive. What we did is, I sought out people, engineers who were experts in this field, and we did receive a written proposal from a firm in Syracuse called Blaslin, Bach, and Lee, which is a nationally recognized firm in this area. The mayor, the Water and Sanitation Commissioner, and myself met with a representative of that firm, and he put the proposal together that I distributed about a week ago to the mayor and other people. Until we get our legislation straightened out, until we get our operations straightened out, we're going to be at a standstill with what the, what the industries are paying and how they're using our system. We cannot really enforce the ordinance at this point that we have, we, we just need to do something. I'm certainly not an expert in this, but I can try to answer any questions, if anybody has.
Have a motion and a second.
Yes. I just have, it wasn't a question for the attorney, but maybe it is. After we obtained the evaluation, is there any other costs going to involve other than I see perhaps legal?
Well, once the evaluation is done, what we plan on doing is meeting with the industries, and we need, obviously need their input, because they're the ones that are going to have to live with this. If there, there may be a need in the future to hire an attorney who specializes, we don't know that yet.
It's the only unforeseeable concern.
But the proposal is strictly for the engineers at this moment.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that chapter 165, the vehicle and traffic ordinance to City Fulton, New York, be amended to read as follows. Handicap parking, modified to read Fulton War Memorial Parking Lot, two spaces adjacent to the handicap ramp in front of the main entrance to the War Memorial. Add, Community Center Parking Lot, south, two spaces directly in front of the Community Center along south curb of the parking lot. Parking prohibited at all times. Add, name a street, Community Center Parking Lot. South side, the distance from the handicap parking spaces in an easterly direction to the east end, parking lot. City Hall Parking Lot, south, the driveway entrance off of South Second Street in a westerly direction for 45 feet. Someone want to move that?
I'll move it. I have a question.
Second.
As far as parking spaces go, do you have to have somebody, handicap parking spaces, somebody parking spots that you have allocated in a lot? And what are those?
I don't know that.
If they do not meet those, then we should just, to meet the standards for the vehicle traffic lot?
I don't, I don't know that at this time. Have a motion and a second on the motion?
I didn't get the second.
I get the second.
Mr. Teremiji, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, one more.
Is Dan, is Dan going to explain this?
Resolve that chapter A-181 of the Code of the City of Fulton, New York, entitled fees be amended to read as follows. Delete, section 177-33E, certificate of compliance, $25. Section 177-39B, variance, $25. Insert, section 177-33E, application for certificate of zoning compliance, $25. Section 177-35, application for an appeal, $75. Section 177-39B, application for a variance, $100. Application for a special use permit, $125. Section 177-26.1, application for a site plan review, $150. Section 177-41, application for an amendment to the zoning regulation districts, $175. Section 177-41, application for a rezoning classification, $200, as permitted in zoning ordinance. Note, any conflict between the fees set forth in this chapter and fees set forth in any other part of the city code shall be resolved in favor of the fees set forth in, in this chapter.
This is a discussion item?
Yes.
Where are we going with this? Does somebody want to offer this as a resolution, or is this something?
I thought it was up for discussion, I had just picked it up.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a resolution.
I didn't know if Dan wanted to speak to this, I'm not ready to act on it. I tried to call you today.
Okay, basically, what this is, is a revision in our zoning fees for services rendered by zoning boards in the Planning Commission. At the present time, every time we call a meeting of the zoning board or the Planning Commission, it costs the city 150 bucks. At the present time, the only revenues that came in from that source was the $25 fee for zoning certificates, and a $75 fee for variances, I believe were the only two items that were addressed. I had always thought that we were charging for them, and I didn't realize this until this month. This is another one of these items whereby the services that's provided, like similar to a permit, should be paid by the person who's benefiting from it. The fee schedule that's proposed is 50% lower than, for example, the town of Volney right now, but we've never had even a schedule, so I wanted to start someplace. And that's number one, that we want to be able, I want to make the government as much as possible that falls under my jurisdiction to be self-paid. And we addressed this earlier, relevant to my department. And, and Jim Teremiji brought up the fact that, that, you know, we may need some more people. He's absolutely right, we may. But he can be assured that I will not ask the council ever to put on any additional people until it will not cost the taxpayers one cent. And I'd like to have everybody know that. Same as with zoning, I believe that people who receive the services should pay for the services. The city can no longer afford to provide that service free, which we're basically doing. And that's why this proposal is there. In addition to that, our people on the boards are paid terribly compared to the national average. Towns pay as much as 50, 60 dollars for a meeting, and we're a city, you know, and we're asking an awful lot of these people. The other thing is, all of the people on the various boards have requested additional training. They need training in this business. This business is becoming very complex. Every day, we have more and more legal decisions to make. We've already seen two, or at least one, Article 78 that's been filed against the city for a decision. I don't mind Article 78s, it's, it's their prerogative to make their own decision, but they do need some further education. We can't expect to ask them to pay for that at $10 a head per meeting. I want to be able to, to utilize that money to bring in the experts, so that we can get them properly trained, so that we can progress as a progressive community here. And that's the purpose of the whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no problem presenting this as a resolution, I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Cavalero?
Second.
I'll second.
I heard it twice.
I think, I think Tim beat him.
Or Mr. Allen.
I think Tim beat him by a hair.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Opposed. Mr. Lincoln's opposed, Mr. Teremiji.
Motion is carried.
Motion is carried. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Which public comment here?
I made the motion.
This is more addressed to Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Teremiji, but due to the gross mishandling of the skating rink over there, and Mr. Teremiji and Lincoln getting tied up in some legal battles, I was wondering if it'd be all right if, on your behalf, we opened a legal fund at Fulton Savings Bank, so that people who want to donate and contribute to your legal bills would be satisfactory. I'll open it tomorrow myself.
Very nice gesture.
I would be honored, thank you.
Okay, all right, and anybody wants to donate it, they can send it to Fulton Savings Bank, or my post office box, 426 Fulton.
Very nice of you, thank you. What should do adjourn?
I made the motion already.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.